Under 7B, we're recommending just to remove that from the agenda. It will be discussed in a future meeting. 9D, computer server. And then... Yeah, E. Yeah, 9E would be city administrative evaluation.
Motion to approve?
To remove.
Second.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Open forum. Would anybody like to address the council? Any questions? Especially if you're smiling, that means you want to say something. All right. Consent agenda. Approval of the minutes. Approval of the bill of purchase orders. Approval of the investments. Out of back license. Leaning resolution number 2016-53 Midwest Outdoor Unlimited. Obagan Partners. That is ambulance coordinator assistant hired. I get a motion to approve please.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Reports. Please chief, you may report.
Good evening. For the month of November 2016, we had eight citations issued, 22 verbal warnings, and 27 written warnings. This was the beginning of our seasonal parking, so that's where most of those written warnings came from. Also in 2016, we had 271 requested calls for service. And in 2015, we're at 350. So this is the first month we've actually had a decrease in calls for 2016. Interesting month. Ended on ICR 3,693, and last year we were at 2905, so we're still up by 788 calls or requests for service. 21 agency assists for the month, pretty standard, and nothing out of the ordinary for the most part. Any questions?
Oh, we have a 30-day mark. How's that look?
Four. They were all served the following week, so we actually have been closer to Christmas is when the 30 days will expire, but there's one property I haven't had a chance to look at too thoroughly. That one could be improving, but two out of the three haven't made it in any effort.
Okay.
So, week of Christmas, we'll take a peek and we'll see where we're at.
All right. Thank you, chief. Any other questions? City attorney report.
Fairly short list. Most of that is following up on stuff that the last meeting with the annexation. Those materials were all submitted to the boundary adjustment unit in St. Paul. They have that information. It'll be January before we get the paperwork from them, which is unusual. It's something that this is... They don't really get to say they are paid. They just have to go through their process, you know, because we hold by ordinance. And they're... They're just fly-specking and checking, but we dotted the eyes across the two pieces. So that's the process. You have to move since actions. You've heard what chief said. We're working on taking the next... Taking it to the next step here in a couple of weeks.
It is 6:26 PM. 6:08 public hearing. 2017 budget levy resolution number 2016-54 resolution adopting the tax levy and 2017 budget for the years 2017 through 2021, five-year capital plan. Finance director testimony to provide truth in taxation presentation.
So part of the requirements when we do our levies to have a truth in taxation hearing so now we can present our budget and our taxes and how we come up with those to the public and then that gives public any chance they'd like to ask questions or to respond. So to start with on how we determine our budget, we try to get it to be as realistic and achievable as we can. So not necessarily looking at what we did the year before, but where we're projecting to come out this year, what we actually spent other years, and to kind of try to determine what we're actually going to be spending and receiving in the coming year. We look at where money will be coming in as well as where we're going to be spending it and what needs are coming up. And we also do a five-to-ten-year capital plan. We look at all of our future projects and see what we're going to need to be doing. Another big thing I try to keep in mind is keeping a stable tax rate so that it stays pretty close each year. We don't have... One year we don't have street projects, that it doesn't dip real low, and then the next year when we have big projects, that it doesn't go high. Keep it consistent. In 2017, the general fund is budgeting $2,410,000 for expenditures. All our other governmental funds, which would be our fire department, our bond funds, capital project funds, any little special revenue funds, are just under $1.9 million. And then we also have our utilities, our water, sewer, and electric, and that is budgeted for expenditures of about $12.7 million. Included in that is debt payments and capital. So the total for the city and the utilities is just over $17 million. In comparison, 2016 was about $17,500. In 2016, there were more capital spending in the utility funds, which is also a decrease. Now we have to... Once we figure out where we're going to be spending and how much we're spending, we take a look at our levy. So first, we look at the tax capacity. So when you take all of the property in the city and figure out the value of it, what it's worth, look at the market value, and then the class rate. And this is all done by Stearns County. So they send me an estimate and then a final. So we take the estimated capacity that Stearns County determines, and then we take it as a percentage of our levy dollar amount to determine the tax rate. And then that tax rate is applied to an individual's property. So you take what their individual property is worth and then take that tax rate, and that determines their tax liability, what they're going to have to pay the next year. So looking at the tax levies, for the general fund, for the general tax levy for 2017, we're looking at $940,000. It's just a slight increase from 2016, and this is the fifth year that it's stayed pretty much the same level, which is really great. Our debt levy has increased $35,000, and that's just due to the debt structuring and the debt schedules. So overall, our total levy for 2017 is $1,385,000. And although the dollar amount increased because our tax capacity was higher, the tax rate is actually a decrease from last year. Looking at that, we always look at what our debt is to. So in the general funds, we have two bonds, and the utility has one bond. For the general fund, the original balance was $4,120,000, and right now we're at $2,760,000 left to pay. So each year between the two general bonds, we pay about $516,000 between principal and interest payments. And as you can see, the first one is set to expire in 2020. In the sewer fund, we have $1,415,000, and we pay about $284,000 a year on that. And that will be finalized in 2018, so that one's coming up. This is a lot of information squeezed together, so it's pretty tough to read, but this is just a summary of our tax capacity and where our bonds... Where you can see in the first few years, 1999 to 2002, we didn't have a debt levy, and then you can see how that's gone up. And then same with the tax capacity. In this column, you can see it went from 1.2 million to almost 2 million. So it's been increasing the value of the properties. And then in the last column, it just shows where the tax rate was over the last few years. So the last couple of years, we've had a slight decrease. And these just show some graphs on where our levy's been the last 10 years. So it's fluctuated. It went up slightly in the late, you know, 2008, 2010, and that just followed with the shortage and funding from the state. Can you guys see that? And then this shows the tax rates also, which increased at that point. A big thing that we always like to look at is where do we fall in line with other cities? Are we higher? Are we lower? Are we consistent? So these show neighboring communities about the same size, and Melrose is that dotted orange line. So you can see we're right in the middle, and we always kind of hover sort of around the same. Like we said, we try to keep a consistent rate. So one year if we don't have a lot of spending, we can save up some of that money for the next year when we have a lot of projects going on. Looking... We always look at where we're going to be in the future. So this, we estimate that the tax capacity to increase 3% each year, and then in terms of general levy increasing 3%. As I mentioned before, we haven't been increasing that at the same percentage the tax capacity is going up. And you can see in 2020, we're estimating a decrease of almost 17%, and that's because that bond is falling off, so. One thing I think is kind of interesting for the general fund is to see where all of the money comes from. You can see 33% is funded by the state with our local government aid, and 39% comes from property taxes. One thing that Melrose does is our electric department with the utility bills has a franchise fee, and then that those collections of 5% is transferred to the general fund. And that adds up to 17%, so it's a good subsidizer, and that helps to keep our tax levy lower. Looking at that, it's always interesting to see, okay, we see how the money comes in, now where does it go? Streets are at 38%, so a lot of our money goes to fund street projects. Police are at 25%. Admin and finance 18, and the rest are between 1% and 4%.
Just to be real clear, that's not just staffing wages, that's...
No, that's all miscellaneous. That's insurances, that's office supplies, all...
Snow removal.
This just shows a summary of the fund balances and the levies. One thing that's always really important to keep in note is our fund balance is so important. That's a big thing auditors look at. Do you have a healthy fund balance? Are you saving for the future? And the state auditors usually recommend between 35% and 50%. So 2016, you look at what the fund balance is compared to the next year's expenditures to make sure you have enough saved, because we only get our money twice a year. So we're estimating our 2016 fund balance to be about 68% of 2017 expenditures. As I showed before, about 33% of our funding comes from the state and local government aid. So in 2017, we're estimated to get just short of $800,797,000 from the state. And that money can be taken back at any time, but we've been pretty lucky the last few years. You can see in 2009, it decreased, and then it stayed the same. And finally, 2014, with the state having a better budget, they were able to turn around and give back to the city. This isn't anything that the council will approve, but it's just interesting to see where the utilities are coming. So this shows the revenues and the expenditures for 2016 and '17 for the utility funds. So the dark blue line is 2016. The lighter blue is 2017. It shows the difference in those. Our capital improvement fund, this is the... We have a separate fund that we kind of use for our long-term savings. And like I said before, if we have excess money one year, we put it in this fund to save up for the big projects that are coming in the future. So we, as a staff and with the council, we get together a couple times a year, or throughout the year, I should say, and we look at all the projects and see what's urgent, what needs to be done, if there's any funding we can get to help pay for those projects, or any way that we can reduce our need to take out debt, to take out any bonds, or to fund those projects. There's a lot of information on this one. This is just kind of a summary of that capital improvement fund for each year. So we show what the outlay is as well as the set aside. So for example, for public works, which would be all of our street projects, this orange line here is what we have in savings, and this red line is what the expenses are going to be. So you can see we have a lot in our set aside. And then 2018, we have spending due to projects, so the set aside goes down. In 2019, we have a lot of spending from street projects. So you can see how that orange bar just keeps going down. So we're spending down some of those funds. Another thing that's important is there's many things that come into play as staff when we're going through the budget and the levy. Like I mentioned, the LGA, the local government aid, that can change and be reduced. And we have such a huge dependence on it, so if the state would hold back nearly $800,000, we'd have to scramble and find out where can we increase our spending, or decrease our spending, or increase our revenues. Funding our capital projects. If there's any legislative funding, that determines when our projects can be done. Healthcare expenses can fluctuate. There have been levy limits in the past where we've only been able to levy a certain amount. That can happen again. And possible redevelopment in town. So there's a lot of information. Does anybody have any... Any questions for the budget going forward, or any levy questions?
Does anybody in the audience have any questions for Tessa? It is 6:39.
Mr. Mayor, we'd be looking for two motions this evening relating to your budget. One is a resolute... One is to adopt the resolution as presented, and then secondly is to adopt the 2017 through 2021 five-year capital plan.
First one, can I get a motion?
Make motion.
Second.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. And third is second, for 2017 to 2021. I get a motion to approve?
I'll make that one.
I'll say it.
All right. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. All right. 7A, skating rink caretaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Annually, the city hires two skating rink caretakers for seasonal part-time work. Historically, the council has authorized staff to select and appoint this temporary part-time seasonal employee. One of the... The last year is... One of the last year's caretakers has expressed interest again in filling this role, and therefore we're recommending to appoint this individual. But the city is currently posting for a second caretaker in case the... He can't be there for a basketball or whatever reason that might be. The deal is the person must be 16 years of age minimum, so I think we got a couple in the audience that might be interested here. And the... We're accepting applications until December 16. So we would ask for the council to authorize staff to do the hiring for this part-time caretaker like we've done in the past, and authorize staff to appoint and hire.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. First and second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. 7B, we are there. Remove. 7C, EDFP certification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a... We've had some conversations about growth within the organization, and what value and what type of considerations we should be doing as we grow our staff here professionally as well as professionally. We recently hired our community development director, Mike Creelman, to take... To replace the shoes of a guy who's been doing the business for over 20 years. And looking at that, and his skill sets that he brings to the table, there's lots of potential there that we see. And we've also had conversations with the EDA board and looked at ways that we can recruit and retain individuals in our community. And having said that, we've looked at different options. There's a program out there called Economic Development Financial Plan. And this program is of value because it helps the city actually build development projects and incentive projects. We currently, right now, we contract with an outside consultant to assist with that. It's about $5,000 to $6,000 per developmental agreement that we would do. The intent is that if we were to have this resource in-house, we'd be able to reduce that cost. There would still be a need for a development consultant when it probably boils down to the actual TIF projections, but the prep work and the administrative work on the front end, there is some value there that we potentially see. I've had conversations with the EDA board as a member of the EDA board. The EDA board is in support of this. However, they're... They, as well as myself, you know, this is a... It's not a cheap course, but it's not an expensive course. We would recommend to fund this program, or it would have to come from the city, but if there'd be like a three-year payback clause on this, like 1/3 each year. So if he were to get the certification and leave, he would then have to pay that back. However, in this scenario, it would be over three years, 33% each year, it'd be forgiven. And after his third year, after the course is done, there would be no commitment to that after. So if you have any questions on maybe value and how this works, Mike's okay with either way, and I'm okay either way as well. This was just a way to, again, look at ways that we could do things in-house and provide value to the employees, and so... And we ran it through the MATA board first to see what they thought.
I got a question on the current expenditures when you do a TIF project. Is it Tracy?
Yes, Tracy.
That consults with us. Expenses that we hear that there, are those recovered through the actual TIF that happened in the budget?
It depends how we want to structure that. One of the... Since I've been here, one of them has. One of them hasn't. The city paid for it out of the cash, and then we could then reimburse ourselves through the increment that we capture ourselves. And so that is one way that we've done it. But one of them, I know for a magnet, we just paid cash for it, and we did not, so it was just part of our incentive. But it is a tool of how you pay for it. For the Tracy system incentive, or we can put it in, say, the developer's agreement, or through the increment, either way.
Yeah. And my other thought on that is, you know, obviously it adds a little workload, and if we can continue on, not just about it, we can continue on with the way we're doing it, and we can recapture those expenses through the TIF financing. You get a conditional about having an outsider come in and look at our projects also. And I'm not saying that we should do it, but I don't think we need to think about that for another month before we do it.
Well, I want to go off what Tony was saying is, in the past, what we've been told is, isn't so much the knowledge or lack thereof of writing these things, whether they're grants, whether they're the TIF, it's been more so we don't have time to do it, something else would suffer if we did that to it. So my question is, much like Tony says, is if we do this in-house, what we've been said and told in the past, we don't have time, what's going to suffer? Well, that's what we're trying to do, because right now with the skillsets that we have in-house, yeah, I can do a lot of the work, but then again, it starts to add up, you know? And this is one way for us to provide value, you know, and try it in the long term, try to potentially, if we have skillsets and tools of all forms, that's what this course could potentially do for the city.
Is this in our line?
No.
This is after six months of...
No, no. I think there... Mike, maybe you can touch on the course.
Yeah, the way that courses are set up, it's one week in June, one week in August, one week in November, and one week is... And so by this time next year, if I passed all the courses, I'd be certified in the program. But I would have to be in Minneapolis-St. Paul for a weekend.
And when you take a look at the budget that we put together for this, that includes him, his own travel time and purchase, you know, having his own housing. He's not going to be staying in a hotel in this scenario. Excluding this year, because we've done about six, seven already, or so it seems. Over the past four years, how many TIF runs have we done?
I can count. Warrior. Cornerstone. Do it. I think three. Three. Three not included, although we're actively working on it.
Right. This year's, I would say this is the exception this year. My point being is that over the past four years, you can count with one hand or less. How many times that that... This has been an issue, where we want to do a TIF run, or we need to hire the consultant.
On some of the... Something is a symbol to... Are they somewhat comparable to old TIF?
Yeah, there is. There is. However, you know, like I said, even if Mike were to get this certification, we would still want to bring in somebody to help with that...
Priorizing.
With that final... Finalizing numbers. And reach out to the attorney. But if there's a smaller project that we can, you know, a small development project, which is all-in-house relatively easy, well, I would say, yeah, I would feel comfortable making a recommendation. Yep, let's do it in-house, and we'll reach out to our legal consult to make it work, and we'll do that way. And Mike would have the resource to be able to do that.
I did have one question is, you know, how much does it cost to upkeep? How much does it cost for continuing that? How many hours a year do you put in, two or three, or whatever? I guess that was a question for you.
Yeah, but Tracy, your choice does always change, and it's always... There's always stuff to learn, so I'm just kind of like...
What we do, and we just actually had a good conversation about training and budgets like that, and how do you justify, you know, expenses and, you know, follow-up and so on. You know, I'll tell you, leaving Minnesota Cities Conferences, a lot of these things, like I pulled my, under my hiring agreement, you allowed me to keep my ICMA credentials, and majority of that stuff I can either pull online, I try to a lot of it, with webinars, and then I'll just go to these various league conferences, or these even MMUAW, or Missouri Revenue Services conferences, and that covers those continuing that CDs. Very similar to your CPA credentials and so on. And that's what I believe without knowing exactly what the requirements are for the continuing that. But most of the time, you can get those for us cheaply versus where CPA actually have to pay a couple more bucks to do.
Nick, you have any questions?
Long time to spend on the class.
And that's why we ran it before you guys, because there's a commitment here. This rolling sub out of the office, and you're still going to be expected to respond to emails and so on. But the biggest thing, the way I looked at it, is there is a payback clause if he does depart, you know, there's that. But it's... Like I said in my piece there, if you think it's appropriate, great. If not, we're okay with that. It's just an option to, again, try to look at ways to do better for the community as well as our professional staff.
I'm looking for... Actually, I have one way or another.
I'll make a motion to not proceed with the class. I don't think that we have enough value with the history of how much TIF we've had to do, with the exception of me this year.
I have a second.
I have a first and a second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried.
7D, Melrose Multifamily Project Skid. Got an updated version?
Yeah, we do. We had some news today relating to the Melrose Multifamily. There was a grant that was applied for. The grant was a substantial part of their developmental plan, however, it didn't go through the Bone Salvage Street. We've had a lot of conversations today with the developer. We had conversations with our Tracy about different options that we had to choose from. And what we came to a consensus with is that they would like to request, and staff would support, a 60-day extension to where they're at today. This would give them enough time, they'd be able to do internal review, value-added construction estimates, as well as allow city staff as well as our consulting staff to look at options that may not have been available before. There's not many, but we're still would recommend to allow them to do diligence to be able to look at that. So what we would ask for is a 60-day extension. The developers are okay with that 60-day extension, and we would probably, most likely, at our January council meeting, the sixth... The second one, have... Start having some conversations about what that might look like if that project were to continue. have, start having some conversations about what that might look like if that project were to continue, which I believe we all do, the whole big does. So we're asking for a sixty-day extension to allow for reevaluation of the project. That's what we'll be looking for at this time.
Did the state give any criteria feedback as to why other projects were selected in this one?
We specifically wanted to ask that question. The state said they're not going to answer any questions like that until after the... But we did have one conversation today with a person that's associated to D. And they said that there were people that had reapplied. And so they, obviously, this is our first go around that. And so those, those two were, two of the four were awarded from last year. But we will be asking that question.
What, what happens if the extension doesn't go forward? It is, I mean, obviously, it was one year. They come back and thirty days later and say, hey, we just didn't get that deal.
Well, right now, the land, so where we left it before is there was a six-month option. And now we're going to be allowing them for another six months, I think it was. It was supposed to happen tonight, with the belief that this grant was going to be awarded sometime in late January, first Friday of February. And, but we found out today. So what would happen is after the, the councils made a preliminary development agreement with them, and that would still stand, we still have to formalize that after this would all happen. So after we have their conversations, and they look at where their gap is, after they do some revalued engineering, they'll come back before the council for a final, basically another option to allow them to finish their, use permits, variances, all the final paperwork and the developments, and the final development package would have to be the public hearing and all that stuff.
So this, the extension is for exclusively rights to the property?
For, for sixty more days, yes.
Or is it extending the preliminary development agreement, or is it, we're exactly extending?
You're, the land option, for sixty days, just the land option.
And that's just for the one dollar?
Yeah. For sixty more days to allow them time to look at where they're at. And then also the same.
I think I can only answer this question right of the, has anybody asked, or anybody else asked about the land?
Indirectly, yes.
The sixty days going out?
As of right now, yeah. They, they asked for sixty days today.
No, but I mean, the sixty days, like the other person, indirectly asked.
I can't answer that. The, when the city, since the city's currently under an option, we stopped all, all conversations with that, under exclusive rights to negotiate with that company.
You might just hypothetically, if we didn't renew it, they could still get the land for the same that we have already. They just wouldn't have exclusive rights, and we could deal with it, it's true, it's that party.
What's the deadline date at this point?
Sorry?
As far as the first...
So tonight is an option to extend. But the option tonight, if you so choose not to allow that option to extend, it could be done tonight.
And it wouldn't kill the project, they would just...
It would make it really hard, they would be very nervous. I wouldn't, they'd be very nervous.
I'm sure they'd be very hesitant to give them the...
That's a very, very question.
But they do have plans.
Yeah.
It seems like the tolls have gotten a bit, not too, but to get that one, though.
I'd, I'd make a motion to extend.
And I'll sign it down.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Two thousand seventeen SealCo project, WSB. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we prepared a proposal to complete the plans and specifications for the two thousand seventeen SealCo project. I do want to point out, this was prepared while I was out of the office. My directions over the phone were to make the cost not to exceed seventy-five hundred total. So the phase one number should be actually sixty-one hundred, and then the phase two, that thirteen seventy-six. So with that, the map was included with report. One thing additionally, the WSB has this year that we have not had before. Tom Wood is, was probably the premier, the tumultuous guy at Mindot. He retired, he now works for us. So we'll be having him review all our SealCo and overlay type projects. So he'll be looking at application rates, that type of thing, make sure that we're being as effective with the oil as we can. So with that, I guess, are there any questions?
The council, did you have consideration of approving WSB and Associates' proposal for engineering services for the two thousand seventeen?
I'll wait there, Mike.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Gary? Third Avenue West Street, approve.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff has requested that we put together a proposal for the resurfacing of Third Avenue, southwest, I guess, from Craft Drive up to First Street Northwest. The, some of these, two of these blocks are actually the worst in the city, with OCI's down in the twenties. And one, two of the other blocks are actually in the monitor category, which means they're, they're bad, but they're, they could go another year. So I, I think the desire was to get these done ahead of some of the other projects within the city that are upcoming. And we had put together a proposal to complete that services. And have that before you, for your consideration tonight.
I'm curious about the coring report, is this a reclaim? Move on right down to the base, and actually missing the base, we need to do, if the coring report was under thirty years?
This is kind of a result of bad experience. Couple of years ago, we didn't do cores in Princeton, the record drawing, so we had X amount of inches of gravel. There wasn't that much there, so there was a significant change order to make up that difference. We certainly could maybe cut the borings in half, but I would like to take some. I don't want to come back and say, we've got another fifty thousand dollars in gravel that we need to add to the project.
Yeah. Would you be concentrating those on two blocks, two blocks that are really bad?
The, the corings?
Yeah.
Uh, no, they would be spread out throughout the entire length, yeah.
My curiosity is if, you know, I don't even know if we have a record of one that was done last.
It's nineteen sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, so it's fifty years old?
Yeah.
And it's in that good a shape yet? I guess, in my mind, the base should be pretty good, if it's fifty years old and it's in that good a shape yet.
Uh, yeah, I think, you know, we always look at traffic projections, increased traffic. And I think we're, you know, we're also seeing probably more truck traffic in town than we have over the, you know, the last number of years. I mean, it's just a good math.
Oh, that might be regulated more, I guess, as far as refracts.
It certainly could be, yeah. But I mean, it's always a good check to do the math. I mean, I'm providing a ten-ton roadway that will last, you know, the design life is twenty years. We just want to make sure that it doesn't come in at a fifteen-year pavement, so.
To an extent, I agree with Tony, the two borings per block seems excessive.
We certainly could cut that down to one, and you just verify that, you know, that the gravel is there.
First Street North, no, we got Main Street, and then it's First Street North, that's as far as you're going?
So is it crafted?
Is that the way it works, like the main drag, and then you go just one block beyond the main drag towards Munson Feet? So you wouldn't go up to Munson Feet, you know, there's a lot of truck traffic there. But there are green trucks and feet trucks and stuff like that, that road, that road is good there, huh?
Yeah, I think north of, Gary helped me out here on the street names. We got Second, First, Main Street, and then that's First Street Northwest. North of that, uh, that river is in better condition.
Okay.
That was done with the low road avenue project.
Okay.
There is some area where you went to the seal on Munson Feet, and there was, now here, bump the truck track. That them blocks from First Street North are everything.
Oh, yeah, that, that OCI goes from a forty-four point eight up to an eighty-two point two, I guess, blocks, but...
I just know they have a lot of truck traffic there.
Yep.
The council, did you have consideration of approving WSB and Associates' proposal for engineering services for the resurfacing of Third Avenue? That's, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll take a motion with one boring per block.
A second.
And based on what the coring shows, whether or not we really truly need a reclaim or just pull on the asphalt down, put asphalt, reclaim. You can make that call.
Yeah, well, we'll come back with some numbers, uh, yeah.
A reclaim is why we can't cut the coring stuff.
I think the staff took some traffic counts, you know, so we'll take that and reject that twenty years. Then we'll, they've got the standard ESO equivalent single-axial loading, which is the number of semis that we'll run that through the design and bring that back to you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. All right, no old business, going on the new business, legislative action, twenty-seventeen, for the four hundred block, Jenny.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and the council and citizens here. This is a pretty big ask that we're making forward here. This is specifically relating to the four hundred block fire. I, I'm in receipt of a letter here from the, one of the property owners there, saying that he needs help to make this a reality. The city council has already taken action to put in together a preliminary development, excuse me, preliminary TIP agreement for the redevelopment of that site. Now, with that, there's still an excess need to make sure that this site gets rebuilt. And I've heard it from more than one person, Mike, we can't let this turn into a parking lot, Mike, we can't let this turn into a parking lot. And so what we did is we reached out to the city of Medelia. City of Medelia is very similar to Melrose, and they had a disastrous fire in Medelia. They put together a legislative ask, which is currently in the bonding bill as well as currently in the tax bill, both of them have detailed what happened and all that other stuff. But there's a really high priority probability that that's going to pass when the session begins here. I've had conversations as well as with Mike Creelman, conversations with the governor's office, a faulty legislative ask. We've had conversations with our state representative, Senator Westrow, Representative Anderson. We've had conversations with our EDA board, we've had conversations with our Public Utilities Commission board as well, as well as with the, with the property owners, to look at ways that we can make this thing a reality. So everything in here, as presented, is, we're talking about reimbursement for tax and refinancing to the developer. We're talking about municipal infrastructure. And this is where I want to have a very significant conversation with the, with the council about the public infrastructure ask. Then we talk about sales tax exemption, which is a pass-through, state property tax relief, again, pass-through to the developer, and demolition funding gap, pass-through as well. And then we can talk a little bit about the JNEO, the electric transmission bond. But specifically, what I wanted to talk to the council about tonight is the municipal infrastructure. Our ask, as presented, is nine hundred thousand dollars from the Fifth Avenue Bridge, just to the Coburn's building. So right on the other side of Coburn's, that's where the road finished. And so we put together a preliminary cost estimate about two, three years ago, I think it was. And that number came in about nine hundred thousand dollars we projected forward to today to do that four-block area. It makes, it makes sense to submit a full ask for that entire four-block area. But realistically, it's two blocks that would be directly related to the four hundred blocks because of the curbing, the gutter, the storm sewer connections, the water connections, the whole, the whole thing that would be, have to be redone with that. And so realistically, our take-back, probably from the, if this would get through to various subcommittees, would be about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if the bonding bill would happen, or the tax bill would happen, whenever this gets jacketed and supported, the city may be on the hook for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, for half of that. Of that half, roughly forty percent is, is utilities, and the other sixty percent is general fund, roughly. Curb, gutter, paving, and there's water and sewer lines that the, the utility would have to pay. So that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're really not planning to spend right now. Do we have dollars to do it? Within Fund Two-O-Three, we may have some unallocated funds, and then have to do some math and push some things around and delay a few more projects. But it's a reality that, that may come up. So if we make this ask, we're basically saying, if the legislature comes back and says, here's two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, we are then really committing ourselves to do that First Street project. So very deliberate, it's very, it's just something I want you to recognize before you take action on that and consider. The other ask on here, this is related to the Public Utilities Commission, so not really related to the city council. But the Utility Commission is asking for bonding dollars to help with our electric substation for a transmission loop. That new electric substation is roughly three point two million dollars. We have about two hundred and fifty thousand of that paid for through a BPI grant, so we're short about two point nine million on that. So we're going to ask the legislature for, for that from the Utility Commission. So having said that, in looking at the various boards and the commissions and how we've looked at this, it may make sense to submit it to Representative Anderson and Westrow. Both of them have preliminarily said that, like, this makes sense. I think I can get this jacketed and be ready to go for the state legislature here in January. If it works fast enough, it may be possible, there may be a special session here on Tuesday. I haven't heard the latest, I don't know if that felt through or not. We might be able to get a bonding request in this special session. Very unlikely, it'll probably unravel the entire bonding bill if we were to try to stick this in there. But at least it'll be jacketed and ready to go.
Mike, maybe talk a little bit about how you got to this. Your first ask with the governor's conversation with the two folks, staffers, was what you wanted.
Yes, we had, when we put together this original ask, we put in, in every project that we thought was relevant related to Melrose. And there was some very serious legitimate requests that we could make an ask for. But with the nature of the legislature and the governor's office, and who they are, and the House and the Senate, they felt that if we model our ask after, after Medelia, that we're going to have a better success rate than if we were to ask for more.
They actually recommended that, they, to revise it to improve the substation based on the pitch feelings?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, they, they, we had a conversation with the governor's office, and they were saying that Litchfield is asking for some generation capacity, which is regional benefit. Our electric substation is regional in some matters, there's a loop portion of it which is regional, which may be a benefit for New Munich and Freeport, and so if we get a fault, there would be benefit there. So we might be able to get some funds to help offset that capital cost for that, and ultimately save ratepayers as well as taxpayers who are in trouble. So we've had lots of conversations.
As far as this first, first reconstruction project goes, let's say they come back, let's say we'll give two hundred thousand dollars to it.
The two blocks.
The two blocks, instead of...
Well, that'd be a question for Mike, our engineer. I, I think...
Man, obviously, there's mobilization expenses, engineering, is there anything else involved, but you'd have to be duplicating. But you theoretically could do two hundred thousand dollars worth of that project. It's all engineered already, I think, a couple of years ago.
Well, I don't know, we finished final...
It was just a preliminary engineering issue.
Yeah, but yeah, you could have just do two blocks, if you only got two hundred thousand.
Other projects going on.
Yeah, you may have a slight upcharge because of economy of scale, but one to two percent maybe.
Right, yeah. So it's, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if you're going to do it, you know, whatever's...
Push the projects down.
Yeah.
Might, might as well do that.
So you're making a motion?
So...
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
So with...
Are you guys going next door?
So with this, what, so what will happen with this is, I'm going to have a conversation with Westrow's office and Anderson's office and the governor's office first thing tomorrow morning, letting know that this is officially our ask, and to make sure that that bill's getting jacketed. Oh, probably, yeah. Yeah, the other block, yeah. Good point.
Have you heard, maybe you don't know, I've got a couple of questions, they started with the demo and then have said stop.
Well, what, what I know is that demolition has started, demolition has now stopped during the demolition period because they're working on the safety of the leases on name building, we'll call it, and they want to make sure they're being very deliberate about the demolition. And if they don't do, if they do it improperly, well, there's going to be some potential challenges there. And so they want to do that very properly before they make their final decisions on how to properly tear that, tear down everything to the, everything excluding leases. It's a civil matter between the, the two, between the property owners. The city has been trying to, our, our primary focus at the city has been the incentive package as well as trying to de-conflict the streets and roadway, right-of-way issues, but we've been purposely and intentionally trying to stay out of the negotiation between the property owners because it is a civil matter, it truly is. But we want to make sure that they have the tools to rebuild, and that's where this comes into play today.
All right, two thousand seventeen meeting schedule. Questions or concerns?
The only thing we just like, we had a staff meeting today to talk about police staffing. We have a police officer that's going to be going on military leave, and so we'd like to have a council work session after the first council meeting in January to discuss that, and we'll also be able to discuss the fire wages at that same time, so that'd be a working session after our, our council meetings. But otherwise, if you, the question for you is, do you like Thursday nights? Want to do Monday nights? Do you want, you know, what works best for you? Or this is a great night?
Are we going to continue to have church next door? Thursday nights?
Well, that's something we talked about.
It's a bit distracting.
Yeah, all right.
But you're agreeable to the council, that's opposed the schedule, I know that's...
Thursdays.
Okay, perfect.
And, and had you, had an idea, you know, for changing the schedule a little bit in January, right?
That was in February, but...
Okay.
Please say...
No, whatever works, right? See what they say.
Hold on, I just, February, I, I just, for council and commission preparation, I'm going to begin on the first week in February, so if I'm vacation, someone else would have to do some, I'm going to move that meeting back one February, twenty, I don't have a calendar, but one week. But it does leave a gap between the January meetings, I mean, I, you know, and then we also have, that, that same meeting in February, you have the township meeting, yes, so I mean, it does really, I just was looking out for staff, so I've begun that week, so someone wants to help with council and commission meeting prep, but...
It's not a big deal, I, I don't know, we just wanted to throw it out there if it's...
The only comment I have is, with Thursdays, third weekend Thursdays, I know that will make January or the August meeting.
Okay.
Is this one of those deals where you have to report back to us?
Well, we can, and we can change those two meetings, I mean, it doesn't matter, I'm just trying to, you know, others have to post every, with the posting, so if I, once I get a schedule, I just post that to three places and then I don't have to post every, unless it's a special meeting, I don't have to post the three day. We can schedule this or keep it as scheduled, if something is right, and then if something comes up that we have to change one, then we just change, okay, thank you.
So in January, there's two meetings, it's the first Thursday and the third Thursday, and the reason that is because we do all the appointments, first January.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, take your second.
My second.
Say aye.
All right.
Close, motion carried. Partnership to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities.
This hasn't been talked about quite some time actually here at the city council. The reason I'm, the reason I'm throwing this on the table for discussion is our legislative ask that we just approved. The way this works is, the city of, city of Melrose, we, we're a member of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, no, excuse me, the Minnesota Association of Small Cities, and that organization focuses on five thousand and below. And if there is a, generally the way it works is that they have a full-time lobbyist out of state capital, the smaller cities do, and they'll go on, they'll do legislative lobbying on behalf of the membership. But we know for a fact that through partnerships and relationships that if we have an ask, they would then help also help advocate for our, for benefit, you know, indirectly or directly that, hey, this is, don't forget about Melrose, here's some partnerships and that staff, city staff can then reach out to this person and say, hey, would you please suggest and so on. Now, the same question came up, is like, well, what about the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, it's a little larger organization. We were a member for a very long time, however we do the budget constraints, we backed out of it, and, and that was really what the world now do is, because of budget constraints. We still have budget constraints today, don't get me wrong, but with this particular legislative ask, it would be nice to have a, a resource, okay, that we could potentially lean on as well as for them to represent. Plus, the other benefit is that you get a reduced fee for any type of union negotiations, Flaherty and Hood, and, you know, which isn't a lot of money, but still, there may be some discussions for a need for that this coming year with our union negotiations coming up. And, but the biggest benefit is that, is the lobbying side, that it's a resource that can help with that. The cost to do this is, for this coming year is eighteen hundred dollars. That fee would be split between the city and the utility equally, and then it, it ratches it up over two years to a grand total of sixty-two oh five, end year twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen it was, I think it was? Yeah, twenty nineteen it'd be sixty-two hundred dollars. The Utility Commission's approved this for a one-year commitment, and then, so that'd be nine hundred bucks per, and then look at it again the following year if there's a benefit for it or not, so. The Metta Board has reviewed this and they have had, they made no recommendation, so. But the Utility Commission did approve it based upon contingent on council.
What's the organization we're in now?
Minnesota Association of Small Cities.
And what are those dues?
Tessa, it's like, the dues for that, it's the... No. Minnesota, oh, I'm sorry, it is eighteen hundred dollars. I'm sorry, it is eighteen hundred dollars. The membership dues, I'm sorry, I misspoke, I misspoke. It's eighteen hundred dollars we paid today for the Minnesota Association of Small Cities. Membership dues for the Minnesota Association, Coalition Agreement Minnesota Cities is thirty-one hundred dollars this year, so it'd be fifteen hundred, it'd be roughly fifteen fifty per organization, so I misspoke, I apologize for that.
And with the Minnesota Association of Small Cities, the eighteen hundred dollars that we paid, have we seen benefits from it?
Sure have.
Direct?
Yeah, through local government, and they would argue the same thing, that because of their lobbying efforts, they were able to maintain and increase the local government over the years.
Directly to their members or at large?
Yeah, at large.
So either way, whether we paid eighteen hundred or not.
True.
Okay.
Is the Greater Minnesota Coalition of Small Cities, am I reading this right, in twenty eighteen, nineteen, is it sixty-two hundred dollars?
Total, yeah, grand total. So it'll be thirty, it'd be thirty-one hundred dollars for a city, thirty-one hundred dollars for the utility.
Right now is the eighteen hundred split?
Yes.
We jump back to the, versus the cities or...
Yes, yeah, yeah, once it ratches it off later.
Is your recommendation to stay on both?
I, I think this year, it makes sense. You know, I think we can use all the help we can get. I'm also going to reach out to one of our, I know that we have an engineering firm that has a lobbyist on their staff, I was going to reach out to them and say, hey, can you give us a help? Try to pull a restraint.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, either way, it is what it is, and again, we're just, I'm just presenting options for you to consider, and there's pros and cons with each of these options, and the con is cons, obviously.
I don't know, I'm thinking with all of the, for Yount Town, I think we kind of need all the elves and all the people speaking for us in town this year. As long as we're not, we're not subject to a contract that we have to stay in twenty nineteen.
Nope, let them work.
I mean that, no, we need to, that, 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 and try it for one year, like we do with the set, and see if it does help. So I'm for, for one year.
And, and here, with the Utilities Commission, was there any other insight that you...
Well, we were, we were again considering what's going on around town, and need for all the help we can give, applying for the grants and so forth, like that, the lobbying that's involved, so if that firm wanted your deal, it probably would be available.
Do you hear a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
My second.
One?
For one year.
One year.
They bring it back up?
Bring it back up.
Okay.
Before we sign any agreement that we are subject to.
Sure.
Because it kind of sounds...
Yeah, so what they do, so what they said is that, the way that you would come back into the organization is that you don't get it on the year one, you know, you get a branch back up, so. But I'll confirm that.
May I have a first and a second? Say aye.
Aye.
Mike, with these, all of our associations, all of our, whatever we are all in, I think we should be annually reviewing these, you know, what are we getting out of, what's our ROI?
Do you need a computer server?
Okay, so beginning of November, we met to find that our server failed. So that day, we got on the phone with our consulting consultants and asked them to quote us a new server. We were planning on replacing this next year, unfortunately, it had other plans and failed before then. So we looked at both replacing, kind of doing a one-for-one and replacing the physical server in our server room, and then we also looked at the cloud version. So we reached out and got a couple quotes, and then in doing that, brought up a few more things. The first one is Microsoft three sixty-five, and Marco had been talking to us about this a little bit, leading up to it, and basically, my understanding that the exchange license that we would have to put on this server, Microsoft is going to quit doing this after two thousand seventeen, so they're going to quit supporting it, so this is something that we're going to have to go to anyway. With doing this, we have the nine users in the city office, and that's, we'd access our office suite, and it would also allow for just email-only applications. And the cost for this with all of the labor would be six thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents, the bulk of that is in the labor for Marco. We're hoping that they can, they mentioned that this, their labor number seems a little high, so they were going to do a couple of them and then show Mike and I, and then hopefully we could kind of install the rest and cut down that number. With that, it would also allow for, we would add email addresses for all of the council, the commission, and the board, so you could have a separate city of Melrose email address. And what this is good for is, it would be used in city business, so it's not in some other server, as well as if somebody were to request a few emails, it doesn't open your private email up. And then we would work on a way with the, or SCP, thank you, files and that. Now, the other quote then was with, the server came into the physical server, ten thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars. When we looked at the cloud option, it was one thousand dollars per month, so twelve thousand dollars a year for that. So Mike and I, our heads are kind of spitting, so luckily we called in a council member, Lawson, who was able to look through some of this and try to determine what's the best fit for the city, how can we make sure that all of our needs are, needs are getting met and without spending a lot of money. And one thing that was brought up is with this Microsoft three sixty-five that we have to pay for, storage is included in that. So our recommendation, our recommendation would be to pay for this three sixty-five that we're going to have to move to, and with that, we're going to hopefully be able to use their SharePoint and the Microsoft OneDrive that comes with this subscription to replace our file server. We spoke with Marco in depth today, the consultant that knows how we're structured, they know our server and our file cap, and he felt this would be okay to do. There is our thoughts where we're going to start kind of moving stuff over and once, we're going to have to get it installed for the office, Excel, Word, all email, all of that, and then start moving files over while we still have our physical server here, and if we realize that this just isn't going to work, then we'll have to come back and look at getting a physical server. But our hope is to not add additional costs to what we're going to have, and actually end up saving money going forward, because we're paying for a server, we're paying for backup, which is now all covered in here. Do you have anything to add to this?
You explain that for tomorrow. But, yeah, so Microsoft three sixty-five costs twelve dollars and fifty cents a month, that's full Microsoft Office package install on your computer. That also includes one terabyte of file, file server storage. And when we're looking at it, it looks, if you use a OneDrive for business, they call it, it mimics a file server on your computer, so you call it up and you can write and drop files, it looks like, and this is all cloud-based, so it's all on the internet on Microsoft servers. You know, we're kind of looking at, looking at a cloud-based solution anyway, because the backups are, you know, done by big corporations, not by us having our server here and buying it, what, Renova?
Renova.
Was it Renova? And that's another four thousand dollars a year?
We pay about four hundred a month right now.
For the backup, our backup system.
And that's based off of the size, so if we were to do this, we would still have some cost with Renova, because we have our separate server for our accounting system, but I would guess that cost would be a lot smaller in half if not two percent.
It looks like it could do everything we need it to, because our file server apparently is used for a print server or any other app, a lot of times you have other applications that run off of that, that server, but this one is dedicated primarily for file server. The only thing that's a couple is having all your data stored on Microsoft server, you know, that, that always makes me a little nervous, because you don't have a physical copy, you know. What we could do then is have the OneSync, OneDrive Sync or whatever, you could put a, on any desktop, have a cheap desktop that it syncs back to in-house hardware, so your backup would actually be onsite, my ring would be offsite, which is kind of helps it, so it's always working fast, but it looks very plausible for two thousand a year.
Yeah, the annual subscription for the nine full package people is about one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, and for the email only is forty-eight dollars per person a month, so I think that amount to about, uh, the email, six hundred and fifty dollars a year, and this is all split half of the mission, so significantly less.
So there's really two questions before the council today. One is, you know, three sixty-five, that's the recommendation that we go... One is, you know, 365, that's the recommendation that we go for right now. Then we reserve the right to come back for the hard server. But the real policy question for you tonight is having all the boards and commission members use the cities, give them a new city email. That's how we would communicate with them. So that's the, that's the, that's the really true policy question that you have for you tonight. Is that, did I miss anything there?
And then the other thing that we have talked about, uh, the labor that they have in here, if that's just for them setting up the 365 and not the data migration. I would also ask that staff would be authorized to utilize Marco up to a dollar threshold if you're choosing because I'm not an IT person and I don't feel comfortable transferring all of our record retention data and possibly losing it. So I would like to be able to rely on Marco to show us how to do it, to start out with that. And hopefully, some of that can be covered under this cost and our retainer that we are ready to have paid.
All right.
And I know we picked around a number, maybe $5,000 to, in addition to the $5,600 labor cost in case they can't get it accomplished in that $5,600. If, if we go forward with that solution, if that looks like it's going to work for us. And then we'll be a little bit of a learning curve, I'm sure, for staff, but I don't, you know, OneDrive would pretty...
It looked pretty similar to what we're using.
Yeah, yeah, we can set up individual drives and control the access between the different departments and stuff.
Any other expression?
So I'm just looking for a motion to approve the Microsoft 365 code and then a motion to authorize additional professional services with Marco for the installation.
So I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion for, to go forward with the Office 365 and to add another up to $5,000 of needed of professional services for the data migration. If that's, we determined that that's going to fit our needs.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Information items, 2017 boards, commission applicants, fellow of these commission meetings minutes, schools and conferences, meeting or performance evaluation of City Administrator McHenry's and meeting medical expectations. Oh, there's one left. Jenny Mears. Colleen is your last meeting. Eight years on the city council, 10-plus years on the hard board. Columnist, volunteer, Jenny. Has so much love for Melrose, organizing, organizing every event from River Pass, Black Friday fireworks, help organize the car show with the brain cancer fundraiser. You have been so instrumental, so many, to so many people to get involved. I want to mostly say thank you from the whole city and make sure you stay involved.
Yeah, just with everybody that put a lot of spark on people. And that other people will get out of their shit. And it takes a very special person to do which I admire deeply. We give that for all of us and, you know, obvious I do. I mean, I miss you very much, but...
Not really, because I know you're going to still be helping us out. From us on the council, we just want to give you a little presentation and definitely take some pictures with you. So we have some flowers for you and a gift for you to open.
Guys.
We can do it publicly.
And so staff puts a lot of time in, in regards to trying to figure out what is, what's a good fit for somebody. And, you know, we had conversations with Patty and all the other staff that knows you so well. And this is just a little, little token of the appreciation of the city for the years, your accomplice years of service. And it isn't, it isn't great.
Oh, it's still about mayor's.
So do you want to take picture? How do you get your picture with you and you can hold it?
Oh, okay.
Maybe we can get a group of the whole entire council here.
Picture.
So hopefully, yeah, that's what we're usually going to do. We did Mike Reamana, no, he's smiling.
Sorry, you guys, I still have a little phone.
Yes, we're definitely going to keep using you and you know that too.
I guess just speak though, keep it there.
Let you talk.
Well, no, I just want to say thanks, thanks for the city, thanks for everything. It's, uh, and I go visit.
We're glad you helped us all. You've done a great job the last eight years with us. So if that's the case, Jenny, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I'll make that one.
Give me a second.
Second?
Motion, hear it.